Welcome to the Wednesday, September 10th Ames District Board Meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We will go ahead and start with item three, which is the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve.
To approve the agenda.
Any of those in favor say aye. Move into the consent agenda. We have two items, the minutes of the August 13th, 2025 District Board meeting. And the lead is the appointment of hearing officers. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any of those in favor say aye. Perfect, thank you. As you know, we encourage general public to provide comments, and so I'll look to Zach and see if we have any. Thank you. First up, we have presentation from our guests, and our guest has not quite arrived yet. So we will go ahead and we'll keep moving and come back to that. So we'll go right to Heather Lauter, our Executive Director of the Loveland Campus for our Loveland Campus update. Heather, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein. I'm happy to be here to share a little bit about Loveland Campus. I'll talk about our programs and give you some insight into who our students are based on programs, and a little bit about our student engagement and engagement. So the degrees and certificate that we have on our campus are the Associate of Arts and a Science, Associate of Science degree. Within the Associate of Arts, someone could get a degree with resignation in business. But we also provide the prerequisites and general education requirements for the Allied Health Programs and Aviation. So the Associate of Arts and Associate of Science degree can be quite general. So to give an idea, our most popular courses really are those prerequisites and general education requirements for the Allied Health Programs, the Computer Science courses, English, and Interpersonal Communication, which is also actually a requirement for some of those Allied Health Programs. Another program we added last year was the GED Study Support Program, and that's been working with the Adult Ed Programs at Amber Pleasant. And it was great because their department identified a little over 100 students that might be better served from a Loveland location based on their home address. And it's gone really well. We started with one day a week and quickly progressed to two days a week, providing that study support. In one of those days, it offered in bilingual Spanish services. The attendance has been great and mirrors the yearly attendance on those same days and times of service. And we're expecting more students even from CU. The Adult Ed Program and Amber have been working on a partnership to provide GED services for CU employees. And so they are actually happy about a Loveland location for potential support. We also have co-listed courses and continuing education programs. The co-listed courses are courses where students have the option of taking that course for credit or for non-credit. And that was in response to the community input of saying they want to have that option. So the courses on our campus where we do that are the Technical Writing, Creative Writing, and Drawing. And then our continuing education programs that we actually house on the Loveland Campus by the Non-Professional Leadership Academy, which you heard last month from Dr. Spetha, and also the Recovery Professional Certificate Program. And so that's for someone who would want to go into behavioral health. Very exciting news, and we're very happy. It's our enrollment's been doing very well and growing. This slide just shows comparison from fall to fall, spring to spring, summer to summer, from 23 to 24, in our consistent growth in enrollment. And we are definitely continuing on that trajectory this fall. As of this week, our non-duplicate headcount is 242 students, 28% growth from last fall at this time. However, these numbers reflect after the withdrawal date at the end of the semester. So I'm very curious to see what our numbers will be at the end of the semester to compare. Some of the student services that we have on our campus are comprised of programs and departments from Academic Affairs and Student Affairs. So here's a list of some of them. The most recent ones we added last year were the National Student Leadership Society Program, where students could participate in that on our campus, as well as Mosaic community groups. The list is not exhaustive by any means. We also have care and jet programs. And the Arties Pantry and Cabinet, the Cabinet is unique to our campus where we have a cabinet and student lounge. And that is a place where students can have kind of grab-and-go food without engaging with employees or forms. They can just get the sessions they need to keep on learning. Some of the student engagement activities I wanted to highlight because we're always trying to figure out, how can we keep students on campus engaged with each other, programming and resources? And it's always trying to figure out that hack. And we've been very happy with what's been happening in the last year. And I want to attribute a lot of that to the collaboration of Learning Commons and our program coordinator, Sarah Cameron, working hard on really reiterating that communication to our students that we're here to support you and providing a space for this. And we've had some organic grassroots things happen, and that's the study groups listed. So we've had a Spanish study group that's met for over a year. Every Friday, they come on campus. It's been actually a continuing ed's conversational Spanish class. And they're very dedicated to practicing their Spanish. So they come every Friday. And then we had a Rad Tech cohort start up of their own volition, and they came two times a week to study and support each other during their Rad Tech programs. And then because we knew we had a strong Rad Tech cohort, Sarah Cameron, our program coordinator, worked with Erin Miyoshi in the Rad Tech Department and some of the faculty who provide those prereq courses in our Allied Health Programs. And we provided a Rad Tech info session. We actually had two sessions and had great attendance. 23 students at one and nine can appear. So we're very excited to see this momentum and the student engagement that's going on. And this picture on the right, it's actually about a picture from our annual student art show. And this is another event that we do where we give students the opportunity to learn what it's like to apply and be accepted into a juried art show and a show that's judged with prizes. And here's one of our winners from last year, Ashlyn, and her artwork behind her. This program is open to all student settings, high school students, non-credit students, and with credit students as well. I always like to highlight one of our community partnerships. So we're always looking at what are the community organizations around us where we can leverage each other's string. And this highlight is about Innovation Forge. They're located in Berthold, and they're providing blacksmithing courses for us. So that partnership is that, you know, we don't have the facilities or the equipment to provide blacksmithing classes. So they do that there. They have the subject matter experts. And in fact, the instructor and owner brings in nationally renowned teachers to help him, and the students are thrilled with that. And then we provide the marketing and the registration process for them. And as usual, we're always out in the community trying to share how great Ames is and also always learning about how can we best assist people with their education and training needs. So here's just a couple of pictures highlighting our efforts out in the community. That left picture is a Festival of Light. That middle picture is our most recent fun event. We were in the Loveland Corn Roast Parade, and the theme was Wizard of Oz. So we married our logos with the Wizard of Oz theme. And we had people from other departments join us, students, retired employees, and our team, and we had a lot of fun. And then that picture on the right is Ally Lemo at the farmer's market this summer, where she got to share about Ames. We just wanted to highlight our team and recognize some accomplishments that some of our team members have this year. Sarah Cameron, our program coordinator, she was, she published a short story this year. It's in the Twenty Billows Anthology, We Are the West Embers, and that was published in April 2025. And Nina Mitchell was a graduate of the 2025 Leadership Northern Colorado. So very proud of our team. And this is our Loveland team, but of course, we couldn't operate our campus as smoothly as we do without every department at the college. And we appreciate the collaboration and the partnership there. So that was it from Loveland. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Really nice job. Why are the increase in students and in the enrollment, do you see it's a reason, is there a population increase? Is it the amazing marketing that everyone's doing?
I don't have any definitive answers. It's the only one is that we've been able to add more courses that we've been wanting. And so we've added more of the prerequisites for the Allied Health Programs, and that's the Anatomy and Physiology courses, where beforehand, we didn't have the science lab capability for that. But really, after COVID being a catalyst to learning how to do labs at home and alternative locations, we now have that ability to offer those courses. And same with the Computer Science courses. So for a while, when we weren't, didn't have all the faculty that we needed for Computer Science courses, we weren't able to offer those courses, and now we're back. And I believe that's most of the registrations. Besides checking out some of those other ideas, which I've been interested to, just is our overall population increasing and why?
Question on the GED programming and numbers. I think it's great that we're helping folks get through the programming. I think that is confusing for some because we're trying to get their GED. I don't know my question really. It's just more around the numbers and just kind of the energy behind it. Because I have heard great things about the program from a few folks who have done the program, so.
So are you asking, what are the numbers looking like? I could see if Amber has answers, or I can get that information for you.
Yeah, it's, I, you know, I'm just curious kind of if that's going up in regards to people seeking. Because I do think it's becoming known of the program. I'm starting to hear a little bit from folks. I had a friend whose son went through the program and high regards. And so I'm just kind of curious if those numbers are going up, you know, and it could it be because, because I think graduation rates are going up. So, you know, is it better? People are finding us, right?
Right. Do you want to answer, or shall we get information later? So Amber Pleasant is the Director of the Adult Ed Programs, and she might have some answers there.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity, Amber Pleasant. So some of the reasons that we're seeing an increase in existing GED programs partially be really strong partners with their marketing team. So they've been working strategically with us to determine the campaigns we've been out in the community. Try to do at least one community outreach event every month. And I think particularly, we've been really effective expanding our Spanish language services. Last year, one of our strategic goals was to make sure that all of our curriculum was equitable between Spanish and English resources. And so we've been seeing the fruits of that effort.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the board? Nice job, Heather. Thank you. Go back up to item four, presentation for our guests. Our guest, excellence at Ames, Kelly Jackson, our Executive Director of the Foundation.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein, and Audience Cabinet. Every month that we get to bring someone from one of our programs is very moving. And we know that they all have different circumstances that lead them through their courses at Ames. Some have more hurdles than others, and some are different than others. Today, we're excited to welcome Forrest White, an alum, Ames alum, who earned his Associate in Welding in 2022. Forrest has overcome significant challenges with the support of community partners and has continued to find creative ways to work and engage with others. He speaks highly of his time at Ames and how it was instrumental. And we're honored today to welcome him and hear his story. So today I introduce Forrest White.
Thank you. I'm sorry I was a bit late. So I faced quite a few challenges being paralyzed and everything, like learning how to weld again. But the school really helped me out with that, especially Paul in the welding program. Helped me learn welding again. And then when it came to the TIG welding, where you made your legs to run the controls, they ended up talking, I guess, with you guys and got me hand controls so I could use my hands to run the TIG welder. But I enjoyed how it was treated. Like I wasn't, they didn't single me out being in a wheelchair. They just treated me like an average student. And didn't use this as something to hold me back by. Why I decided to pursue my education further is I felt like I was stuck in an endless loop of not being good enough at anything. And I figured a degree would help me push towards bettering myself. That's all I got off there. Where am I working? I'm working at Noco Customs up in Pierce, Colorado. The story of classic vehicles.
Any questions for Forrest? Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Forrest, for taking time out of your busy day and to come and share with us what you've experienced at Ames and as your career progresses. It's really what we look forward to hearing about at every board meeting is, how are our students doing? Are we meeting our goals? And it's just so satisfying for me as a board member to hear your story. And as a token of our appreciation for you taking time to come and see us share. Thank you so much and best of luck moving forward.
Thank you. Okay. Something here. We have our representatives to the board. I'm very excited to announce Patrice Bergstaller, who will be our new Ames Faculty Association Liaison. And I'm excited to have you here and represent that, so.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and the Board of Trustees. I am the new faculty representative to the BOT. And this is my fourth year teaching at Ames in the music department. I'm one of the two vocal instructors. And so this time when we sent out, I'll have more to say in October, because I'm really new. And so, but we sent out a new faculty accomplishments email for them to report on Monday. And I not only sent it out to the deans and chairs uploading some of their images. So we put that on, we put that opportunity on the report as well. And it's really nice. There's faculty members across Ames campus that have been walking up to me and said, I'm going to fill that out. So I'll have much more to say in October, just highlight more things. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you for being here. We look forward to your work.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Ames Staff Association, Paul Vashlin.
Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein, my fellow colleagues. I'm here today on behalf of the Ames Staff Association to provide you with an update on our team's upcoming plans and China spotlight on the dedication that drives our college. This year, the Ames Staff Association has chosen connecting our voices as our central theme. We believe this concept is essential for our college's continued growth and success because it encapsulates our belief in the power of collaboration and shared experiences. It's about creating an environment where the voices of our staff are not just heard, but actually connected and interwoven with the wider college community. We are building a richer, more inclusive campus dialogue and strengthens our mission and expands our reach. To live this theme, we have developed several community outreach initiatives. These include two Community Volunteer Days where our staff will organize and participate in local service projects. And a third is yet to be determined. These initiatives not only build connections, but also showcase the dedication of our staff beyond our campus walls. And I'd also like to take a few minutes, a moment, to spotlight two outstanding members of our staff, which I don't believe are here, actually. First, Dina McVain, our staff executive for the Associate Vice President of Academic Affairs. Is an extraordinary asset to this institution. Dina has unparalleled ability to manage complex operations with grace and precision. She anticipates challenges before they arise. It is the quiet force that ensures every project from major initiatives to day-to-day tasks are executed flawlessly, not a personal thing. Dina, as the Secretary of ASA, has kept me on task. My mouth sometimes gets ahead of my brain, as many of our department knows firsthand. And Dina's right there reminding me to always stick to that agenda. Next, I want to acknowledge Linda Richardson, Staff Associate for Business and Technology, who recently stepped up in a time of great need. When a colleague was facing a significant health issue, Linda did not hesitate. She seamlessly took on the responsibilities while continuing to excel in her own role, all while offering unwavering support and compassion. This act of selflessness and teamwork is a powerful example of the kind of community we are building and the caliber of individuals we have working at Ames. In closing, our connecting our voices theme is more than just a phrase. It's a commitment to collaborate, to a more collaborative and inclusive future for both our staff and the broader college community. And thank you for your continued support. And if there's any questions, that'd be more of the topic then.
Any questions? Well, thank you for your report. Okay, next up, we have our Student Government Association with Jeff Thatch, who will be on Zoom today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, Chair Shaw, Dr. B, faculty, staff, and my fellow students. I'm going to keep this one short, and I do want to apologize for not being with you in person today. Even so, I am grateful, as always, for the chance to share just a glimpse of the energy and excitement happening in student life. We kicked off the semester with the greeting project, where volunteers stood ready to help lost and confused students with big smiles and even bigger stacks of snacks and resources. From there, we rolled straight into fall-ins across all our campuses. These gatherings have been more than just welcome events. They have been powerful reminders of what happens when students feel seen and connected. One student said to me after the yearly fall-in, I didn't know Ames did this kind of stuff. This is really cool. I got so much free stuff. I could feel this connection and feel the connection that this student was beginning to build with Ames. And that's the heart of our work, creating spaces where students do not just attend Ames, but belong here. None of these successes would be possible without the dedication of our incredible volunteers, the way Daniel Irwin led the charge in organizing Fall-In in collaboration with Kelly Porter, and the many students who are stepping forward to shape their own experience. I also want to share a quick reflection from one of our ARC facilitators, Anna, after the greeting project. They wrote, "The whole thing stood out for me because I spoke with every person I could, making sure they understood what we do and why we are there. The purpose is the, this purpose is the most important part of our job, and I worked hard to share it equally with everyone. One conversation that stood out was with a classmate named Cass, who offered to help me in my science class. Being part of student life gave me that connection I never would have had otherwise." And that's just a snapshot of the work happening in student life right now. Thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Questions? I'm just going to call out one of your statements, Jeff. Thank you. When you just said, "Students don't just attend Ames, they belong here." And I think that's, you know, that statement of what's so special about Ames. And so thank you for calling that out and the work that you've been doing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Thank you for joining us on Zoom.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will move into 7A. We only have one action item today, and I'll turn it over to Jerry Harvey.
Thank you, Chair Shaw. As you all will probably remember, this item was originally discussed and brought before the board in August. After that discussion, the board decided to table that for discussion again at this meeting. So that is why it's been made for reconsideration here. As a recap, the proposed revision, it was required for consistency based on the proposed revision, or the revision that occurred in August to Policy 11, which prohibits trustees from serving on more than one elect. As I mentioned, it was originally discussed, this revision was originally discussed at the board meeting on August 13th, and moved to this meeting for further consideration. Based on the feedback from the board during that meeting and then further consideration from staff, the proposed revision that you're finding in your packet here would require a trustee's seat be vacated if they accept a nomination designation for appointment for other elected public office. As I noted last time, this is consistent with other jurisdiction that has been approved by legal counsel. So if you have to answer any questions.
If not, the recommendation is for a motion to approve revision to Policy 13, trustee vacancies. Do you have a motion?
I shall move.
Any of those in favor say aye? Thank you. Okay, next up are informational items, and I'll turn it back to Jerry to provide an update on our upcoming events and agenda, upcoming agenda items.
Chair Shaw, I will highlight a couple of items on the calendar. You see, there are quite a few upcoming events on there. We'll highlight all of these, but one that I definitely wanted to highlight is upcoming Friday, Convocation Day. All trustees will be able to attend that on Friday morning this Friday. Serve for our system and be part of the program as well. As we skip down toward the bottom, we're getting close to the end of October, which is when the board will be attending the annual ACCT conference in New Orleans this year. So this is a reminder to those who are attending, those don't forget to purchase some tickets sometime soon and then send me those receipts. So I will reimburse for that. And next, we'll move over to the annual calendar of upcoming agenda items. We'll look ahead to the October meeting. As a reminder, October, we are in the Windsor campus in the eight-year building. That will be a time for the Academic Master Plan update during the President's Report, Academic Program Feasibility Review and Liability Report, and institutional research and performance, as well as whether in the work session or as well as whether in the work session or bring info items. I'll be bringing to you the proposed calendar for next and change as well, so that will go into next month for review and for discussion, and then for action in November. Any questions?
At least close to bring our A3s?
If you have them, you're welcome to bring them. Yeah, if you think they're good, feel free to bring them.
Be a fun day. Okay, next up on 8B, we have Board Elections Update again with Jerry.
Okay, just a quick update here to the public for yeah, for the election, for the election. As everybody is probably aware, the board took action, especially moving on September the 2nd to cancel this November's board election. The reason for that, as highlighted in the press releases, the deadline to turn in petitions with the adequate number of signatures to get onto the ballot was August the 29th. At that time, we had one person for each seat that was up for election. Because of that, the election is eligible to be canceled. The board took that action at a special meeting by resolution approving that cancellation as well pointing or declaring elected the following individuals to the seats. Trustee General Shock to District C for a four-year term. Rhonda Solis to District D for a four-year term. And Marcella McCauskey to trustee District E or two-year. On behalf of answering questions.
Question?
The new candidates for it are very, very excited. It's had an effect where it's announced.
No questions, just a comment that I encouraged both of those candidates to apply, and both have longstanding history here in Northern Colorado, and both have a huge passion for education, and so I'm really excited to see them take on this role and really support Ames as it moves into the future.
A big thank you to you, Jerry, functioning as the V O E and running through the regulatory and everything that needs to occur. We really appreciate it, Mark. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our CEO President's Report with the new Bornstein. Thank you, Chair Shock, and the board.
Are there, first of all, are there any questions in the pack of a packet highlighted items for cabinet members before we go to first? Moving on, Dr. Ailer is up and ready with Dr. DeCosmo in the wings. Our first monitoring report is Common Learning Outcomes Assessment Report. Please take it away.
Board members, cabinet guests. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Andrew DeCosmos to give the report on curricular assessment and learning.
Thank you, Dr. Ailer. Good afternoon, Chair Shock, and members of the board, Dr. Bornstein and cabinet and colleagues. It's my pleasure to be here today to present to you our annual Common Learning Outcome Assessment Report. Before we hop into the common learning outcomes themselves, I thought it might be helpful to connect common learning outcomes with some other levels of assessment that we do at Ames. Every course that we offer have course-level outcomes. Course-level outcomes are measurable knowledge, skills, and abilities that students will be able to demonstrate upon their completion in a course. Many of our programs have program learning outcomes, and so by the end of the program, those are measurable knowledge, skills, and abilities that students will be able to demonstrate at the end of a program. What we're going to be talking about today are common learning outcomes, and these are also measurable knowledge, skills, and abilities, but these are are things that we want all of our students to be able to demonstrate regardless of the degree or certificate path that they're on. They really answer a question. What do we want all of our Ames graduates to know? And these are our five common learning outcomes. We call them CLOs for short. These have been in place for about 10 years at Ames. They were approved and vetted internally at all different levels of the organization. These are assessed in our classes each fall and spring semester. And next to each CLO, you'll see a certain number of criteria. The criteria are what we use to assess that particular CLO. So for example, written communication, it says that there are six criteria for written communication. Those are the six things that we look at when we're assessing that particular learning outcome. So for example, main idea, content and context, organization, of language use, supporting elements like citing sources. And then finally, conventions, you know, is the student able to use conventions, grammar, and punctuation appropriately for that writing assignment? So those, I'm mentioning those criteria because those are going to come into play a little bit more later on in the presentation. So this is the process that we use to engage in common learning outcome assessment. It's CLO assessment is driven by faculty. It's led by department chairs and program directors. It's supported by deans and many others within the Academic Affairs Division. But it starts with faculty in their departments having conversations and making plans on which CLOs they want to assess, in which courses, and in which semesters. And they plan it out, usually about three years of assessment plans. And then that way, they can take a holistic look at what's happening at CLO assessment in their department. The deans can have a broad holistic look at what's happening in their division, and then we can see what's happening in all of Academic Affairs. But once those assessment plans are in place, it helps the departments to know ahead of time, okay, what did we say we were going to do? Which CLO or CLOs are we going to assess this semester? And then they decide how they're going to do that assessment. So in an English class, they may have decided to assess written communication in a particular semester. They might choose to do that by scoring a student paper that the student was going to write anyway as part of the course. In a math class, they may have chosen to assess critical thinking or problem solving, and they might do that by pulling a particular test question that the student had completed anyway. We really want the CLO assessment artifacts, that those student products, to be something that they will have already done in the class. We don't want them to be extra or artificial because then they feel different, and that can, that can impact our outcomes. So we just want this to feel very natural for the students. So after the means of assessment has been decided, those artifacts are collected and the faculty member evaluates them using a rubric that was designed specifically for that particular CLO. So back on that written communication example, we've got six criteria under written communication. That has its own rubric that faculty use when they're scoring student artifacts and products. And the rubric itself has all the criteria listed down the side. All six criteria. Across the top of that rubric, we have scores. And the scores range from one to four. A one just means that the student is still developing in that particular area. A four means the student has already arrived. They have demonstrated that they have that knowledge or those skills and abilities for that particular criteria. Our goal is for at least 70% of all of those criteria scored to be evaluated at either a three or a four on all of those rubrics. Then we collect all of that information and compile it, and all those results are then shared with the faculty in the courses that conducted the assessment. They're shared at the department level with chairs and deans, and then they're shared at the institution level, which we're going to see, we're going to see that data in just a minute. This is what our participation looked like this past year, so this is for fall of 2024 and spring of 2025. We had 19 departments engaged in Common Learning Outcome Assessment. Thirty-six faculty assessed 90 sections, 762 unduplicated students, and almost 6,000 criteria were assessed. And this is what we found. So this data slide might look familiar if any of you saw the presentation last year. If you haven't seen this data slide before, if it's unfamiliar, not to worry, we'll go through it together because there's a lot of things on here that we need to unpack. So I'll start by directing your attention to the lower left corner of this slide. That's listing out all five of our common learning outcomes. The chart of percentages at the bottom of this slide represents the percentage of the criteria that were given a three or a four on that rubric for that particular CLO. So for example, written communication. If we look at that row on that percentage chart down toward the bottom, we'll see that in Academic Year 2017, 81% of those criteria were scored at a three or four on the rubric. If we follow that row all the way over to the right-hand side, we'll see our most current data. So that column on the right is our most current data for Fall '24, Spring '25. And for written communication, we see 77%, the criteria that were scored were rated at a three or a four on that rubric. And then we can look at all the other CLOs and see what their percentages were. And again, those are the percentage of the criteria that were rated as a three or a four on that particular rubric. So if you're a numbers person, you might enjoy staying down in that numerical part of the slide. If you're more graph visual person, you might direct your attention more toward the top. Because what we did then was we plotted each one of those percentages up in the top part of that slide on a graph so that we can see kind of what have those trends been for each one of those CLOs? Last year, you may remember that we were paying attention to one of those CLOs in particular, and that was the oral communication CLO. That one did dip down a little bit last year. It looks like it did bounce back up again. We are continuing to kind of keep an eye on that and dig into that, lean into that a little bit. Our Faculty Teaching and Learning Center is planning some professional development this year for faculty to support them in working with students on communication skills, and so that's that training and professional development is still happening, you know, regardless of the fact that this came back up again. We feel it's an important area to be focusing on. Another thing, the Curricular Assessment Committee had a chance to dig into this data a couple of weeks ago. We are very curious about the critical thinking CLO. That one took a very big jump this year. And so we'd like to dig into that and lean into that a little bit more to find out are we changed, have we changed anything about how we're teaching or assessing critical thinking? Could this possibly be an outlier that might level back off again in future years? We're not quite sure just yet. But these are, I think, very exciting results. Oh, and I almost forgot, on the graph at the very top, that purple line that goes right across at 70%, that's our target, that's our goal. So then that way, we can see where have we been above our target and where have we been below? So for the next part of the report, I wanted to touch on the Curricular Assessment Committee just a little bit more and share with you an exciting project that that committee is working on. This is a committee that's made up of seven faculty and five staff administrators. And we meet monthly. We started meeting again last year after a couple of years off. We spent a little bit of time reorienting ourselves to all the assessment work that's been that's been done and where are we keeping all that information? But then we very quickly moved into a pretty big project, and that is to review and possibly update those five CLOs. As I mentioned earlier, these five CLOs have been in place for about 10 years. And it's time for us to take a look at them and ask ourselves if they're still relevant for our students and for our community. So we started that work last year by conducting a lot of listening sessions with different groups at the college and just asking them, hey, these are our five CLOs. Do these still make sense? And if they don't, what should they be? And then after we conducted listening sessions, we also sent out surveys. And then the Curricular Assessment Committee spent the spring semester poring through all of that rich information and feedback and input. We look for themes. We saw places where we could put things together, where, how we could organize things a little bit differently and update. At the end of the year last year, we did have a shortlist of draft CLOs that wasn't completely solid. So it's not quite ready to share just yet. So this fall, we picked that work right back up again where we left off, and we've got this shortlist of draft CLOs that were solidifying, and probably within the next six weeks, we should be ready to share that draft with really hopefully everyone at the college community and just ask them, you know, this is what we thought we heard last year when we had these conversations. This is what we came up with based on what we thought we heard, and did we get it right? We also plan to engage in the community by getting community member feedback through our advisory committees on any new proposed CLOs. After that list is approved, they will go through other approval processes, and then we will create any new rubrics that are needed for any new CLOs. And then it'll be about a lot of communication and awareness and training after that. If there's extra time after that whole project is finished, the Curricular Assessment Committee really wants to look at process and make sure that our assessment process is aligning with other processes and that we have given faculty enough time to engage fully in the entire assessment loop, the assessment process. And if there's any extra time after that, we want to look at our assessment tools that we use to make sure that they're still working well for us. If we do run out of time on any of those projects, we will carry any of these into the following year because we feel that they're really important. So the last portion of the report, just wanted to update you on a couple of things that our Faculty Teaching and Learning Center is doing to support faculty with assessment. One of those things is the creation of an assessment professional learning community. Professional learning communities, we call them PLCs for short. They are created and facilitated by our Teaching and Learning Center, and they they all have similar topics and themes. And basically, they give faculty, they're open to all faculty. They give faculty time and space to engage in conversations related to that professional learning community's topic. So faculty can bounce ideas around, and they can talk about student learning, and they can talk about the craft of teaching, but they really are meant to engage faculty in conversation. This new Assessment Professional Learning Committee was created by our Instructional Coach. She's also a member of the Curricular Assessment Committee. And I think for that first semester, we had 11 faculty from six different departments. I think that's great participation for a brand-new professional learning community. And really, the purpose of this one is to give, again, give faculty time and space and support to be able to talk with each other about curricular assessment. So we can talk to one another, you know, how, hey, how do you assess professionalism in your courses? How do you assess professionalism in your courses? How do you assess written communication? We can share ideas and we can engage in a little bit deeper conversation about assessment in that PLC. And then a second support that our Faculty Teaching and Learning Center offers to faculty are called norming sessions. A department norming session is when an entire department gets together and they look at the same student artifact, and they grade it according to the rubric. They score it individually. And then after that, they share with one another what they came up with, and you know, oh, you rated that one a two? I gave it a four. What did you see that I didn't see? And so it gives faculty in the same department an opportunity to really engage in conversation and really develop an understanding of what does a two mean under professionalism, or what does a four mean? And we do that through what's called norming, and those are also facilitated by our Instructional Coach. The most recent one we had was with the English Department, and I believe 12 faculty participated in that. And any department can arrange one through our Instructional Coach. They just have to ask, and she will set it up. So before I answer any questions, I would just like to take a minute to thank and appreciate everyone who's engaged in curricular assessment. It is a very heavy lift. It involves faculty, chairs, program directors, deans, Dr. Ailer, our Academic Affairs Functional Analyst, institutional research. I mean, so many people are involved in this and just want to really take a minute to say thank you to all of them for their hard work and their dedication and their investment and their leadership in this process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much and all the hard work. I can't even imagine where to start.
The question on the CLOs, is this, is it a assessment that can be done at the beginning of the course? And then they do it again at the end, or is it something that's the full entire semester?
So it it could be done that way. I I don't think that they are right now typically done that way. I believe that kind of assessment is more on the course level assessment where we would check in at the beginning of the course and then see what progress is made throughout the course. And then program level assessment, we would do some assessment at the beginning of the program and then reassess in the middle and then reassess at the end. When we're making these assessment plans, if a particular department chooses, they can, they can assess the same CLO each semester and then get a broad picture of how are their students doing on that CLO across several semesters?
I have a few questions, but I'll ask the first one. Ask. But my first question is, I know that you said that your curricular assessment committee is kind of starting to dig into some of this data a little further, but upon initial review, what is, what what have you seen is the source? Sorry, that got really loud. What have you seen as the source of the significant growth in the CLOs that we've seen like the twenty plus kind of degree change?
Yeah, that most recent one, the the oral communication and
and critical thinking, yeah.
Yeah, so we we just received this data and started going through it a couple of weeks ago. So we haven't had a chance to really get answers to some of our questions. But some of our questions are, have we changed the way we are teaching these skills? Have we changed the way we're assessing these skills? Have we changed any kind of student supports that are taking place? Or faculty training that's taking place maybe at the department level? We also are curious to know how many criteria have been assessed on each one of these CLOs? Because sometimes changes in the number of criteria that are assessed can make so the fewer criteria that are assessed can can make that number a little more sensitive. And so that could be too. So that's something that that assessment committee really wants to look at next time is let's, let's get how many criteria have been assessed. Let's get that data so that we can better understand maybe some of these most recent, you know, highs and lows that we've been seeing could be explained just because we were just assessing fewer of that criteria, that particular cycle.
Quick question on developing CLO. Where the national standards that would be drawn upon in developing these, maybe you commented on that earlier than yesterday. Just to see that we're beating, there are students at the formia same level as students southwest, are there national standards?
So there are not national CLOs. When we're creating, when we're, when we're doing that project where we're thinking about creating new CLOs or revising, I should say, our current CLOs, we are looking at other institutions to see what what do they use for their CLOs and you know, can can we maybe borrow some language? Or if we're hearing similar things from the listening sessions and the surveys, can we can we lean into what some other institutions are doing? Sometimes other institutions even share their rubrics that they use to score their CLOs. So if we, when we get to that point, if we have new CLOs, we can, we can reach out. Sometimes they make them just publicly available on their websites. So yeah, we we can share other resources from other institutions. But I'm not aware of any, you know, kind of national assessment that's happening where we're all sharing our our data with one another.
I just want to tack on to to this question, Jean. This is another sort of talking point and point of pride. While CLOs are common nationally among higher education, they're not required. What's required by accreditation agencies are certainly class, of course, outcomes and program. Not required to have institution. So again, another point of pride is Ames chooses and has for many, many years to go above and beyond to have that conversation about what do we, we as an institution feels important for all of our learners to walk away from and demonstrate as a citizen.
So first of all, thank you. The amount of work is just amazing in this and and, you know, I love the outcomes. I think we can better tell our story to the community, you know, when we can say, here are our outcomes. And so I love that. I love the fact that it's an environment that's set of discussion and learning and conversation because it makes doing that not so intimidating, you know, for all seven hundred and what ninety some odd, you know, students. Is it realistic to think that perhaps all students? I mean, I don't know if there are goals related to that, or would we just see that it would be a sampling? Is it realistic to think that maybe someday all students would be assessing this information on?
It, yeah, I think I think it could be part of those conversations. We haven't gone that direction before, you know, to to require CLO assessment, you know, in all courses. But I think as we're, as we're updating our CLOs, I think it would be a good opportunity for us to have that conversation as an institution about just about breadth of of assessment and how, you know, how can we encourage and and attract more faculty to engage in CLO assessment with even more students? Yeah, I think it, the more students that we're able to assess and and learn more about, the the better we become and then the better our students become.
Dr. DeCotmo, thank you again. I have one final question, and it has to do with that review of changing or revising the CLOs. If the CLOs are changed or revised, how do you see yourself comparing kind of apples to apples to the previous ones as you kind of like move into the new space?
So if any of our CLOs change, the the rubrics would likely change. And then we would need to start this data slide, we would need to start over again. Because, you know, even let's say, let's say written communication remains one of our CLOs. Let's say, though, the rubric changes and the way we're assessing it changes. It, we, it, it wouldn't be right to attach or tack that new rubrics results onto what we've been seeing with our current rubrics. So it's very likely that next year or the year after, we may have, we may have a completely new data slide with with data that we're creating those new trends.
I have one question as well. How do you incorporate the feedback? So when I think about it as a business person in hiring folks coming out of programs, right? And, you know, one of them, oral communication being one of the lower areas, which we see as well. And I don't know, probably technology, I think there's a lot of contributing factors. How do you incorporate that feedback from your employers as students are leaving? And assuming with your interviews and stuff, that's somewhere in your development feedback?
So are are you asking how we incorporate employer feedback based on what they're seeing in our graduates when they conduct interviews? A lot of that feedback does reach us through our advisory committees. We we meet with our advisory committees twice a year. And we use that as an opportunity to learn, you know, what what are you seeing? Well, first, what are you seeing in the field? You know, what new things, what should we be paying attention to, what new courses, what new equipment, those kinds of things? And then also, what what are you seeing right now from our graduates? And and it doesn't necessarily even have to be graduates. Sometimes it's what are you seeing when when our students are in your businesses and and places for for clinicals or for internships? You know, give us some feedback, what can we be working on?
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for all your, I always find this just fascinating in how things link together. So thank you.
Me too.
Thank you, Dr. DePoisson.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Yen. So next in the president's report, we have three sabbatical reports coming to us. They are listed in alphabetical order. So we will ask our professor of speech, Bill B. Flora, to come up and talk about her sabbatical on nonviolent communication.
Short. Shrinking by the year. Good afternoon, Chair Shock, board members, Dr. B. and guests. As a professor of communication, my sabbatical project was focused on Marshall Rosenberg's life work on the concept he coined as nonviolent communication. I was particularly interested in more effective strategies in addressing conflict situations, particularly in higher education. I felt the best way to learn these skills was to immerse myself in a seven day intensive training course with experts who not only offer these conferences and trainings all over the world, but they also professionally do NVC work with communities, organizations and governments. These are the four trainers whom I worked with. There were about ninety people enrolled in the training and our headquarters, where we met regularly throughout the day, was a large gym with rugs, yoga mats, beanbag chairs, cushions, couches, pillows and giraffes, lots of giraffes. The environment placed a lot of focus on inclusion, empathy, self-care and comfort. On the first night, we randomly, we were randomly placed into a group home, a home group, a group of people we met with after lunch every day to discuss NVC and support each other through this journey of intensive workshops and discovery. If nonviolent communication is unfamiliar to you, here is Marshall definite, Marshall's definition. A way to communicate with each other rooted in compassion, curiosity and open heart and care for oneself and the other. At its heart, NVC, NBC's intention is to connect with ourselves and others while tackling conflict through the lens of mutual respect, care and consideration. Rosenberg developed four simple steps known as the NBC process. This process includes observing the situation, identifying our feelings, stating our needs and then making requests for resolution. On the surface, this process seems pretty easy to accomplish, but it takes a lot of skill and practice to become effective nonviolent communicators. In order to become more skilled at NBC, we must understand the difference between jackal language and giraffe language. You can see Marshall using hand puppets to represent each side's communication. Jackals use language that focuses on controlling others and blocking empathy. The focus is limited, right, wrong, good, bad, and pushes people away, leading to disconnection. Marshall identifies the four Ds of disconnection as diagnosis, demands, deserved type thinking and denial of responsibility. Conversely, skilled giraffes speak from the heart, leading to connection by using messages of empathy, self empathy and honesty and applying this language in the four step NBC process. With practice, anyone can be effective giraffes. Marshall observed that giraffes are just, or jackals are just giraffes without skills. In conclusion, I do not see my work as a one semester study and presentation. I am hoping to continue this work and will be looking for more professional development opportunities in the future. This fall, I will be presenting a two hour NBC workshop with FTLC scheduled for October seventeenth. Lastly, I must thank you for a special opportunity to visit my Japanese family and friends. Sorry. My original plans were derailed during COVID. So I had to take this opportunity to visit during the cooler season of October. Returning to Japan after leaving twenty-two years ago, I got to see my school, Onokogyo Kokko, with my precious friends and family. So arigato gozaimashita.
Thank you, April. Board members, do you have any questions?
Yeah, because I love the direction in regards to the NBC and I'm glad you got to experience and move through them.
Yeah, it was very special.
I was fascinated, it was just amazing, meaning more of this. Your workshop at FTLC is where?
It's, it will be on the Greeley campus. Thank you so much.
Next, we have our professor of English, Jared Mark, who is on Zoom and his sabbatical focused on using generative AI in technical writing. So I just took a moment to find him on Zoom.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon, Chair Shock, esteemed members of the board, Dr. B. and colleagues. I apologize for not being with you in person today, but I appreciate the opportunity to share my sabbatical project with you. I want to begin with a personal anecdote because I think it helps illustrate the impetus behind my project. I have a beautiful little daughter who's twenty months old, exactly today is her birthday. And she's very precocious, like most kids are her age, she wants to get into everything. In the mornings, I often make her eggs and she comes over to the stove and she wants to touch the stove and cook with me. And of course, I have to show her that that she needs to be careful when touching the stove. If I tell her just not to touch it at all, it just, it just increases her curiosity and she wants to touch it even more. But instead, if I show her, hey, here's why you shouldn't touch it, here's how I'm using it, this is a very powerful thing. It's a good thing, but it has to be used responsibly. I think it helps teach her, you know, that responsibility of of how to use it. I point that out because I believe technology is similar with our students and particularly when it comes to generative AI and with writing students. Because ever since artificial intelligence has grown over the last couple of years, it's really put us on the defensive as as instructors, especially writing instructors. Because I feel like we were in a position where we're trying to teach our students, don't use it. And if they do use it, we want to try and figure out how we can catch them and stop them from using it. But I think that part of my job as a writing instructor is not just to teach the old fashioned concepts of writing and reading, but also to teach them how to use technology to leverage their writing effectively. And so that was the impetus behind my project. So I wanted to look into how I could use AI and specifically generative AI in the classroom and teach my students to use it to enable their writing skills. So I began with some research questions. The first question I had was, how does the growth of artificial intelligence alter the definition of document composition and authorship? Obviously, traditionally, we think of the person who writes the words as the author of a document. But Gen AI, Gen AI is changing this a little bit in that if somebody uses it, are they the author of the document? What if they create all the parameters for the document, but they don't write most of the words? Are they still the author? So I wanted to look into that. Next, I want to look into can generative AI be leveraged to enhance technical writing mechanics? When we think of mechanics, we think mostly of grammar and punctuation. But in particular, things like voice, tone and style, which are really important for my students to learn, are really influenced by generative AI. So I wanted to see how they could, how I could use these and they could use it to enhance those skills rather than simply for quote unquote cheating. And then lastly, I had a question about how it could be used to, for for better revisionary writing skills. Ernest Hemingway once famously said that the only kind of writing is rewriting. In other words, anyone can put words on a page, but where good writing actually happens is the ability to take those words, make them better and and form them the way that they should be. So with those questions in mind, I jumped into the process and the research. As part of that, I consulted numerous scholarly books and articles on the use of generative AI and specifically for technical document composition. Now, I must say that because Gen AI is so new in its current form, there's not a lot of academic research in the field. Obviously, it takes Obviously, it takes a while to prepare that academic research and for it to be out there. So it was really a challenge finding academic research for this. There is some, and I was able to locate it, but I'm hopeful that my project can help fill some of that void. As part of this, I also surveyed my technical writing students last semester on their conceptions and attitudes toward AI use. Naturally, they are excited about it, but they're also a little comprehensive for the most part. I combined that research and the survey data to assess whether generative AI use can strengthen student writing skills and confidence in the writing process. And then lastly, I spent a lot of time experimenting with multiple AI software platforms myself. I created a lot of documents using a lot of the different AIs, using hundreds, if not thousands, of prompts to see what the results would be. So with that in mind, some discoveries that came about, I was, I do believe that effective engagement with generative AI is inherently a writerly act. Furthermore, I believe is inherently a rhetorical act, which is particularly important for technical writing because I teach my students all the time the importance of audience and how important it is that their documents be tailored towards a specific audience. And I believe that generative AI can help with that. I also believe that effective AI use teaches, teaches writing students that process is as important, if not more, than product. We often think of writing as the finished document, and that's certainly true, but as an instructor, the process that I want my students to go through to create that document is more important probably than the document itself in terms of teaching them long-term writing skills. So lastly, the outcomes that have come from this, I want to highlight one in particular. This fall, in my technical writing classes, I am allowing my students, I'm encouraging them, I'm not requiring them, but I'm allowing and encouraging my students to use generative AI to create some of their documents. And we're also doing a lot of activities in the classroom where I'm leading them through this process. Now, if they do use generative AI to create their documents, I'm having them submit what I, what I'm calling AI portfolios. In other words, rather than just submitting the document itself, I want to see the process that they went through in using AI to create that document. So as part of this, they're submitting evidence of their prompts, emphasis on plural, the multiple prompts that they're using to, to create the document, and then also the multiple revisions, again, emphasis on plural, that they're using to shape that document. In order to assess this, I've obviously had to create some new student assignment sheets, schedules, and in particular rubrics, rubrics that put more emphasis on the process and all the prompts that they use and, and everything else rather than the actual finished document itself. And then just for my colleagues, I've obviously created a bibliography that is still working with all this research. So I'm excited about this, we'll see how it goes. My students are excited to use GenAI. I'll end by saying, I think one of the greatest benefits of this is that for students who would normally not gravitate towards writing, they might avoid it. There's, I think that the use of GenAI is an effective way to engage those students and without them really realizing it by, by writing, rewriting, using lots of prompts, they're number one, doing, they're doing technical writing in, just by doing that inherently. And then it also gets them excited in the writing process where they otherwise wouldn't be with more traditional methods. So thank you for your support of my project and sabbatical projects in general. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jared. Any questions?
One comment. Thank you for giving presented. I love the AI writing and then they have to rewrite. I mean, that concept is perfect. You can have a, a game with it and see what happens. Amazing how people's writing skills improve when they have to rewrite. So this is amazing and it'll be interesting to see what outcomes.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I have a question about maybe like, maybe it's like process around this. So knowing that you have certain students who are participating and utilizing the generative AI and you're kind of like reflecting and reviewing their prompts, are you able to like maybe support additional learning by, by supporting kind of collaboration between those students so the prompts are stronger? I mean, the writing is still their own, but prompts are stronger if they're working together to really develop like the best type of prompt?
Yeah, absolutely. Some of their writing projects are individual, some of their writing projects are collaborative group projects, that's always been the case. But I think you're right in that in particular, having the group, you know, they each come up with their own prompts, and then they're able to see some of the weaknesses and strengths of those prompts and they're able to merge them into a more effective prompt and then see how that impacts the document that gets created and then of course rework it and go over that process multiple times. That is definitely an exciting opportunity because it gives them an opportunity to work together in a way that they otherwise wouldn't.
Here are the comments and questions. Jared, this is really fascinating, the outcomes. Do you have any intention on, I'm sure you do, we've been sharing it with faculty colleagues, maybe through FTLC and not just your outcomes, but maybe as you're learning and finding new outcomes as you actually execute this in classes?
Yeah, absolutely. I was asked to create an FTLC presentation for this fall, but I told everyone, I want to see how this goes first. At this point, it's somewhat theoretical. I think it's strongly based on research and my findings, but obviously I want to see how it goes in the classroom and, and then it, it'll be a more effective way to perhaps show other instructors, or at least demonstrate how I'm using it and how they might be able to use it too, once I've seen the outcomes with my students.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Professor of Biology, Emma Murray, whose sabbatical focused on studies smarter, not harder.
Yes, here. So yeah, I teach majors biology and something that I noticed with a lot of my students is that they struggle with studying, especially they think they've done loads of studying and then they don't do very well. And I get the, my mind went blank. So this is probably what my presentation, or my sabbatical was about, trying to kind of help them with that. So I want you to imagine that you want to bake grandma's famous coffee cake and the recipe is safeguarded at a relative's house. You go around and you read the recipe a bunch of times, go and buy the ingredients, and then the next day you try and make the cake and it doesn't find turn out how you wanted it to. It may be that you're a terrible baker, but it's probably because you didn't practice. And so just reading the recipe wasn't enough to be able to recreate the coffee cake. So students actually do this a lot without realizing that they're doing it? Can you hear me okay like this?
Because we have folks on Zoom who need to, and our board meetings are recorded in archives.
Okay, ignore that. And so students actually do this. What they do, they'll study and then they'll, they'll go to the exam and the exam is actually them figuring out what they know and what they don't know, which is not a good strategy. And they, a lot of them don't realize they're doing this. The most effective way of studying is called recall-based or retrieval practice, which is where you basically try and recall the information. So a lot of students will actually read, this is the results of a study, looking at effective study strategies and what students do, and most of them will do the low-effective strategies. So my sabbatical focused on making these recall-based study resources for both students and instructors. And my course is use open access materials, which are free to students, and so there's a support those materials as well. So first, I surveyed students and instructors for the course to figure out what topics I should focus on, what the preferred kind of study methods are. So no point making something if students don't want to use it. And then I looked at the different options that were available to me for making resources. Something I focused on a bit was Creator Plus in D12, which is relatively new and that was, that was really good. Videos and things like that. I then made a bunch of resources and then at the end, I'm surveying students as well to figure out what kind of resources did they use, what were useful to them, and instructors as well, which ones did they, did they like using? So overall, the, the project right now, I've made a guided D2L shell. And for anyone that's not aware, D2L is our, you know, a way of delivering our courses that students access. But this is for instructors that teach the same class. And so it guides them through how they should use the resources for students or some recommendations. And it also brings together existing resources as well, so they're all kind of in one place. Just a few examples of some resources that I, I made. The first one is interactive study videos and students really like these. It will present a question and then they'll pause the video and try and answer the question. It might be drawing, writing things down, and then they unpause the video and see what they, how they did. So it's both practicing recall, but also a bit of review at the same time. And they figure out what, what I want them to know, which is, which is good. In D2L, this is the Creator Plus, it's really flexible, you can do a bunch of different types of interactive stuff in there. So some of it's just questions, some things are like matching up. Kahoo is something we often do in class, it's a, you've got to answer the question really quickly. And I made self-paced ones so students can do them whenever they want at home. And then study guys, if you just change the question, instead of going like, what is the best animal? No, wait, instead of saying, know what the best animal is, you'll ask them, what is the best animal? And the answer will be birds. In-class activities for instructors, these are instructor resources. So this is a matching activity for different genetics patterns. And then we use Nearpod a lot in class, and if you've not used it before, it's, it's an interactive way that students can answer questions and you can see what they're saying. But if instructors haven't used it before, it could be a bit of a steep learning curve. And so I made little videos to go along with those of how and when to use them. Study quizzes for, for students so they can, instructors can give students these quizzes for them to test what they know and what they don't know. And then I've made a bunch of worksheets that are in the lab manual already and I've compiled those into the, into the shell as well. So I won't read all of this out, but overall, students really like the resources and the main thing that they said in their, in their comments was that it helped them to figure out what they knew, what they know, what they don't know, which was the whole, the whole goal. So some instructors that use them as well, the ones that use them said that they were, they were useful. So going forward, I'm presenting an FTL session in the fall, in October. I'm going to expand this shell, make sure it gets to all the adjunct instructors and just keep making resources and add extra things into the, the lab manual, which is a lab manual workbook. So yeah, so thank you so much for the opportunity. I learned a lot. I think it's benefited our students and I think I'm my dog.
Thank you, Emma. Any questions or comments from the board? Wow, I guess you answered all their questions. Fabulous. Thank you so much, Emma. Congratulations. Okay, the next part of the president's report is Zach McFarland, who will do the annual board communications plan. We do that with you, and then he'll roll right into our talking points and highlights for, on the end, September.
Hi, Chair Shock, Dr. B, members of the board, audience. Today, we're, we're just going to go through the, what will be the annual Board of Trustees Communication Plan, and then I'm, I'm right after that and we'll go back through the board talk. So really, this communications plan that I just handed out to you is intended to be a, a working document. This is kind of a first draft that we're going over today. The intention of this is, is to kind of cover it, then you all can go back, take a look, talk about it amongst yourselves, and then send me any edits you have, any thoughts, any additions, and, and we'll add those to, to, to this plan. This is intended to be for the remainder of this fiscal year, and then we would make this an annual process, hopefully probably in the summer next time where we bring it into maybe the board retreat and continue to work through that plan every year. So I'm just going to go through this, stop me if you have any questions and we'll kind of work on this together. You know, the first point is a monthly, bimonthly talking points. We started that last month. You know, we're going to continue to update those. We'll go through those here in a minute as well. Every month, we'll bring you talking points in the format, you know, that we've presented to you, we'll make those edits. Every month, if we have another point of emphasis that we want to get into, we'll bring that, present it at the board meeting, give you the handout for you to take away. So that's how we'll, we'll operate with those. The next one is pocket facts. We actually just handed those out. Pocket facts right there, Dr. B is, is showing you. So these are based off the annual report. You should have four to five of those. You can hand those out. We also stock these. So if you want any more of these, if it's a benefit to you, let us know, we'll get those into your hand. You'll see there that there's an A handout. You guys have seen this, it's, it's, it's a big A and then on the backside of that, there's a lot of other data and statistics. We're also editing that and printing it out. It's just a much longer print cycle for that, since it's a unique piece. I'll have that here in the next couple of weeks to, to give you at the next board meeting. Ames, we do a quarterly VIP newsletter via Dr. B. Our plan for that is to then highlight the new board members on, in, after the December board meeting when they're confirmed, we'll highlight those, do some highlights, put them in, in the next VIP newsletter, which does go on December seventeenth, so the timing works out pretty well. Op-eds, we were pretty heavy on op-eds in the last cycle, and frankly, what we're seeing now is they're kind of not super interested in op-eds, and so we're going to decrease that, though we did see an opportunity to, to look at next May, when we're doing our graduating class, working with Student Affairs and seeing if there's any kind of fun facts that we want, anything unique about that class that we could kind of craft an op-ed on. So that one will be a TBD, but we'll be looking for an op-ed and a tribute around that point if we have something to say. Building projects, obviously, we're, we're driving around seeing all the building projects. There's two things of note, Student Help and Wellness Center, we're going to have a beam signing when, we'll get the date to you and when Mike and them give it to us. I think, I don't know, is Mike here? We were looking at October for that. Yeah, it's going to be some point in October, I think later October. What we're looking at there is it's a really good opportunity since the Student Help and Wellness Center, we figured for Chair Shock to really do, you know, some piece on the benefits of, of the Health and Wellness Center for the community. And then we would leverage that, not through an op-ed, but through LinkedIn. We see a lot, our LinkedIn audience really likes building information and construction projects and stuff, so we feel like that's a really good channel for the professionals to kind of, you know, see that piece from Chair Shock. And obviously Chair Shock, with your experience in the field, we feel like that's a really good piece coming from you. So we look at LinkedIn, Facebook posts, and then we would potentially pitch that over to Biz West and see if they're interested in running that as, as an actual news story. Then we would have an AWIC beam signing TBD on that date. We would do something similar, we would do some interviews with a board member on the benefits of the AWIC to the community, using some of the talking points that we crafted for the AWIC here in the last couple of months, which I feel like are pretty refined at this point. Sponsored events, we do sponsor them, we, we provided that list here. This is every sponsored event that we have coming up. Depending on the event, we either get dates super early or super late, you know, just it's event-specific. But what we would be looking at, one, we incorporated this in the last comms plan, we'd be looking at making sure that where we have the opportunity, they would be announcing you guys as elected representatives, you know, and having you stand up so people can acknowledge that. And then two, I, this is an arbitrary number for right now, I put, you know, attending at least two events, that would be something that you all would debate and, and kind of come back to and say, hey, actually, this is the number for that. And then we've listed all of these out, which ones have already passed, and then the ones that we have coming up in the future, and then the month. Again, a lot of these do not have firm dates attached to them. Sammy Hudspeth on our team coordinates that, and the process is getting refined to make sure that once they get us the date, we're getting the invites out as soon as we possibly can. And so those are all the ones that we're sponsoring them. CTE month is actually in February, we actually have Skills USA on campus, so we would be doing a, a feature story pitch to local media, looking at getting the board involved in that. There's some hands-on components there, and that would be the same with, since it is CTE month, looking at kind of the power of CTE programs. We have a lot of really amazing hands-on experiences. We listed a few out here, we have a lot of simulators, Hydraulics Labs, Allied Health with Terry has a lot of hands-on stuff. So we think there's opportunity there to get a story, get some traction on a story that really puts you guys kind of in there, like mixing it up with some of our stuff and then getting some video and, and leveraging some of those channels to kind of use that as an opportunity to raise awareness in the month. an opportunity to raise awareness in the month. Quote placement and Ames PR, this is a carryover from the last comms plan too. Anytime we're doing PR, you know, I've showed the numbers in this meeting on how much more PR we're doing, how many more press releases and story pitches, as appropriate, when it's in there, we want to put a quote from a board member, from Dr. B, you know, in those stories, just to continue to get those names up. And there's a little note on here that we want that to be substantive content, not just filler. And so we will really use our team to look at, hey, when do we actually have something to say from the board or the president? And then we'll insert it there. Some stories, it's just a kind of an awkward fit. And we kind of want to to kind of grow our muscle and being able to determine when it's appropriate and when it's just filler. Convocation Day this Friday, you know, again, it set the tone for the entire year. All staff will do, Chair Shaw will be doing a brief charge on, to employees, and then all of the board, whoever's actually RSVP at the board and cabinet will be serving. And so that's a 7:30 show up in a way to engage with our internal audience. So it's always a lot of fun. President's reception, again, no data on, well, we might have a date on that yet. I just didn't list it. Well, I'll look if there is, I'll put that on. But really, that one, same as before, Chair Shaw will come up, thank employees for years of service. We typically have a board member up there, you know, handshaking and just thanking people. And then all of that will get coordinated through Jerry, which is that. Statement in the daily from the president after the board retreat in June, which is still in this fiscal year, really, as you all determine your priorities and such, we'll, we'll make a statement on that where we kind of verify that for employees. And we could potentially look at extending that out into some external audiences as well as appropriate. Annual Report, the chair typically does a statement in the annual report. So we'll be looking at that in the next cycle. I have both of your commencement attendant dates in there for attendance. And then this one was driven by, by you all really wanting to look at that Ames Day luncheon. Ames Day actually falls on a Saturday this year. So I just put January 23rd as a placeholder. We'll have to kind of decide on the date here pretty quick because it's actually scarily, it's coming up rapidly. So we'll want to start getting this together. But that's really an opportunity for the board and special guests to highlight strategic plan line items, major projects, and then really looking at a lot of our community impact data to present that in a gathering like that. So we'll be looking at doing that this year, and then every two years after that would be, would be that simple. One note I would just offer for consideration on this year is I believe Julia told me the following year is our 60th anniversary. And so we would miss the 60th in that cycle. So it's just something to know when we think about the following year to offset. So just, just as a note, but we will plan on this year and then every two years after. That is the draft Board of Trustees Communications Plan. Is that enough for you all to do? Yeah. Finally, for once, I, there's stuff for everyone to do but me. Actually, I have to be listening.
So truly, if you could just take a moment to kind of absorb that, and if there's anything else that you would like in the board comm plan for this next year, we'll shout that out now or give that to Zach for consideration.
If we can edit this anytime to, if something pops up this week or in the next couple of weeks, just now, we can drop it anytime.
Trustee Garcia.
Zach, one of the things that I don't see in like our August talking points that maybe can be in the next version of talking points is what was shared around the buildings, you know, like the pre-planning with like using US Steel and really kind of being intentional in those pieces. I think that those are really important facts that we can share with the people that we connect with. So I got some of them down, but I didn't like where each, if it's coming from Tennessee or Wyoming or Alabama or those kinds, I think those are very important, like points to share with community in that there is an intentionality of where those materials are coming from, how the money is being spent, those types of things, especially as people see, you know, like the cost of higher education moving up and all of those types of things. I think that those are very intentional pieces to share that the, that the buildings aren't solely for our students and for community, but also the way that they're being built and that engagement. There's like, there's like a why of how they're being created.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, great point.
Anything specifically for the comms plan? And then we'll roll into talking. That's trusting.
I really liked your, the post on LinkedIn. Those are the ones that I like to repost. And I have such a different market of my organization of engineers and, and architects that they really love what Ames is doing. So I think it's, I think you should do more. This is, it's well received.
Awesome. Thank you. Good point.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Zach. If you'll roll into talking points, we'll start with trustee Garcia's just recent comment.
Duly noted. Me and Mike can sync up on that and get some more facts. You know, Mike is also seeing, Mike Millsaps is also syncing me up with some people from Roach Construction when we're looking at all that geothermal stuff to work with them on doing, you know, some pitch to the media on, hey, this is a pretty unique build, right? Like, and this is worth being featured. And so we're always also not just looking at the talking points for stuff like that, but looking at how we can inform the broader community, bring them into some of the stuff that's maybe a little bit more behind the scenes. So really good point. For the talking points themselves, based off of trustee, Trustwell's feedback from the last one, the talking points for this month are generally the same. But you'll see the second talking point on the, on AWIC and Student Health and Wellness Center are new additions. And then we trimmed up some of the other ones. And those new additions speak to the why behind the actual projects to get you, here's the, you know, it goes, here's the launch date, here's why, and then here's some fun facts. And so those will be the main differences on the talking points as to why we're actually building those two buildings. We felt like we already had that one for AMTC. So we didn't need to add that one there. So that's the, those are the changes with this month's talking points. I do foresee some different ones next month, especially as we get enrollment numbers, maybe providing some facts on enrollment numbers and things there. So those are the talking points. Yeah, I, something like that. Yeah. So that's what you see right there. That's your pocket backs. Those are the pocket backs. You can also, the intention for those, it's kind of, it kind of subsidizes your talking points as well. And when I get you the A one, that will be in addition to these. Hopefully, we're equipping you with a lot of just really good, specific information and talking points. And then general aims, information on enrollment numbers, demographics, the A piece, I keep saying A piece, I think you know what I'm talking about. It's a big A and it has facts on the backside. That'll provide even more specific information on certain topics. So really, you know, our hope is with that kind of suite of materials that you all have, what you need is you're out in the community to speak broadly to Ames and some of the things that we have.
And I think as Zach had mentioned before, the intent is to give these away.
Yeah.
We have, we have plenty and Chuck manages a print shop. That's excellent. And so we can always print as many as we need. So let me know what you need and I'll happen to go into.
Zach, any questions or comments for? I'm hearing a lot of, this is great, this is great. So can you hear that? Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time and voice.
Thanks, Zach. Finally, we have recognition of new employees. If there are any supervisors in the audience with new employees and you want to quickly introduce them, please go ahead and line up at the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Mon, Director of Planning and Instruction for EPHNO. And it's my pleasure today to introduce Doug Horst. Doug is our new manager of campus space, about the call it now, three months, three months. So he comes from industry, has a ton of experience actually working with us on the vendor side. So he knows Ames well for many years in court, we've smashed them. So welcome Doug right out.
Hello again. I'm pleased to introduce Elias Flores, or si habla español, Elias Flores. Elias brings 20 years of experience in working in public libraries with a strong background in public service. Throughout his career, he has led public instruction, community outreach, and early literacy efforts for varied communities throughout Weld County. In addition to Elise's professional work, he's been actively involved in playing regional Mexican, Mexican music around not only Colorado, but other states. Together as Los Flores de Durango, they have become a staple in the Latin, in Latino, and especially Mexican community in northern Colorado. Elias is passionate about helping his community remain connected to their roots and honors where he came from. Currently, Elias serves as the bilingual digital literacy specialist in our adult education department, where he's overseeing leveraging technology to help students and instructors to close the digital divide that is keeping some of our students from being as successful as we believe they can be. So he's very excited to be removing this obstacle between students and their goals. Elias has expressed that he is honored to meet the Board of Trustees, and he looks forward to collaborating with everyone to continue to further the mission of Ames. Thank you.
Hello. I have the pleasure of introducing two full-time colleagues to the Science Department. First, I would like to introduce Carly Carpenter, our new full-time biology faculty member. Carly holds a master's in biology and brings an extensive background and passion teaching anatomy and physiology. She actually joined Ames back in 2023 as an adjunct faculty member. And she has shared that Ames' student-centered environment and tight-knit community immediately felt like home and has driven her to pursue full-time employment with Ames. Outside of teaching, Carly loves to draw, medical illustration being a major topic of interest, and she also likes to read. She cannot thank her fellow faculty members enough for the life-changing experiences she has gained working at Ames, and she's excited for the many more years to come. I would also like to introduce Emily Richard to the team. Emily Richard is joining us as a lab coordinator one, as a full-time staff member. She also has a focus on assisting our biology and environmental science labs. She has a bachelor's degree in molecular biology and genetics and has worked in both academic and industrial labs previously. In addition to her work at Ames, Emily is actually also working on her master's degree in Student Affairs and Advocacy at CSU. She plans to blend her passion for supporting students with her science background. So we are very excited to join them both, to, to welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Anyone else? Okay. Chair Shaw, and ever so the board, that concludes the president's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The great reports. As we're reaching the end of the meeting, we always take a moment from self-satisfaction because we value the whole. Do any of you have any comments, makeaways, things like? I would like to just thank professors, the teachers that went on sabbatical and shared their information with us. It's, it's very well received and very informative. I look forward to it every year. So thank you.
Great meeting. Thanks to the people in the room that, you know, make sure that we're well prepared for the board. And so thank you for all your hard work. I do have one question, if it's okay. How was the speaker series, Zach?
Appreciate the question. We're, we're sitting right around 500 sold, and then that doesn't include student giveaways. That's the working with students there. So we feel pretty good about that for a first year. You know, a lot of the, I, I think the community, based off of our initial feedback, communities little, what's this format? You know, the one, four speakers, one ticket. And so I think there's a learning curve that we're getting past. We still have two weeks, you know, from today, actually. Amy Cuddy will be here two weeks, which is crazy. I'll say, we met with Amy Cuddy two weeks ago. We met with Lake Babham last week and had Zoom calls about, and it only generated more excitement. I knew we had a little cool thing, but talking to them, these are very, very high level, very interesting, passionate people that I'm, I'm excited that our community gets the, gets the opportunity to interact with. Both very gracious, and both are planning on going out and doing meet and greets in the lobby afterward and just talking to people and in the back. It's going to be a really cool thing. We, plenty of time left to get tickets, you know, tell all your friends about it, everybody. Sign up, get your tickets, tell your friends. We want to kind of put as many people in there as we can for this first year. So. And I'll talk to you afterward. We're going to square like you said. So we'll chat right afterward.
I want to talk to you about my tickets.
Okay. I have a next promotion to adjourn.
I move to.
And when you see all those in favor, say aye. Moving to adjourn.